Council Agenda: Township of Persipony, Troy Hills. Regular Township Council Meeting of February 20, 2024. Introduction: Posting of Notice. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing a notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 4th, 2024, what has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on January 8th, 2024. Let's ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. The Republic of the Republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, undivided, and just as one.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Township Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Township Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum. We're going to go ahead and begin. Upcoming meetings: March 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the Agenda Meeting; March 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM is the Regular Meeting. At this time, we're going to go ahead and roll right into the Ordinances. Second Reading and Public Hearing. Ordinance 2024-01: An Ordinance of the Township of Persipony, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, Amending and Modifying Chapter 4, Administration of Government, Section 4-81, Third-Party Payment Plan for Emergency Medical Services Provided by Par-Troy EMS, Chapter A, 445, Fees Compilation, Section A, 441-19.1, Emergency Medical Services of the Code of the Township of Persipony, Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, New Jersey. The Notice of For Ordinance 2024-01 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Persipony, Troy Hills, on February 12th, 2024, and introduced at the February 6th, 2024 Agenda Meeting. May I please have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Who was that?
Mr. Neglia.
Okay, Mr. Neglia.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Public Hearing. Can I please have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. In case seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Okay, a roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, floor is closed. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing, and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to approve, Ordinance 2024-01, made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Now, we are going to go ahead and move on to the public session. May I please have a motion to open the public session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public to speak on any matter. Please be advised you have five minutes to speak. Once you speak, we ask that you please take your seat, and the council may or may not address you at that time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Your name?
Karen Martin, 66, River Drive, from Hiawatha. I'd like to find out what's going on with the flood project. The last big rainstorm we had, I have a leak in my backyard from the wall. When I drove down by the country club, it's leaking in every single joint. All the gates are compromised.
Can I ask you to speak closer to the mic, ma'am?
Okay, all the gates are compromised. Water just rushes out. I called and asked them to sand back them, which they did. But I'd like to know, when is it going up for bidding? I tried to get a meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, but I guess I was ghosted.
Well, I don't, I'll let you finish before I respond.
But I mean, what's going to happen with this? I mean, if you don't put it out forbid, it's not going to get fixed. And everybody in Lower Lake, Hiawatha, has a chance of being flooded. I had 25 inches in my house after I rained. I don't want to go through that experience again. So I'm trying to find out. I mean, I first got the notice in 2021, March 15th, that you were taking the fence down. Then, on February 28th, 2022, you were putting it out to have it appraised. It's been appraised. I got a notification that you have to do work as far as the brush on either side of the wall and the trees. Well, there's still brush there, and there's still trees growing. This compromises the wall. But I mean, I haven't heard anything about when it's going to be fixed. Because I don't know what's going on.
Is there anything else you have, ma'am?
No, that's about it.
Okay, if you can take your seat, and then at this time, I'd like to ask either a member from the administration or council if they'd like to address her concerns.
Council President, if it's okay, I can...
Yes, go ahead.
So, we took a look at the wall, reached out. We went physically, Mayor and I actually physically went to the area to look at the wall. We also contacted our engineer, who I know that their office has been in contact with you on more than a few occasions. It is concerning to the eye and to you, and I understand that. But all indications and all studies that they've done, that the engineering department has done, and independent engineering firms have done, have told us that it is, it's ready to get repaired this spring. And it's not something that's in dire need, that needs to be done today. So this spring and the summer is when it will be worked on.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Michelle Gaynor, 2 Elkhorn, Persipony. I'm here to ask the council and the town of Persipony to support the corporate business tax. We have a resolution. I'm on the Environmental Advisory Committee. I'm also a, I work for the environmental, New Jersey Environmental Commission. And I am being asked from my organization to come and ask Persipony, as well as towns throughout New Jersey, to support the corporate business tax that sunset in 2023. So in December of 2023, it sunset. In 2014, as a member of New Jersey Keep It Green Coalition, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, worked with environmental commissions across the state to support a constitutional dedication of 6% of the corporate business tax to environmental programs. Governor Murphy has proposed a 2.5 cut in the corporate business tax for big businesses, including those proposing giant warehouses in communities across the Garden State. If Governor Murphy's 2.5 corporate business tax is implemented, cut is implemented, which it has been, communities and our shared environment will suffer, and funding for environmental programs will be greatly reduced. Governor Murphy has proposed slashing, and use our estimates, 48 million annually for the preservation and stewardship of open space, green and blue acres programs, farmland and historic places, 12 million annually to support communities with the remediation of hazardous sites known as brownfields, the cleanup of leaking underground storage tanks, and funds cleanup of hazardous spills. So what I'm asking is for the town to sign a resolution. I have a list of towns that have already done so, and they're continuing to come into my organization. And hopefully, with the next session, we're going to bring this to the legislature to ask them to implement what was previously implemented in New Jersey, so that at least we have a 6% dedication going back to open space preservation and hazardous fund cleanup sites. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaynor. You can just give that to me.
I was going to say, do we have that? If you can give him that copy. Yes, thank you.
Council President, could I just add to her? Thanks, Michelle, for bringing that up. It's really important. This 6% that we're losing from the corporate tax, the money goes to things like, this woman was just talking about, the flooding, blue acres funding, green acres funding, and we're having more of those issues. So any kinds of monies that we can get that's not a burden to the taxpayer, it would be wonderful. So we don't want to see that sunset, even though it has. But I'd like everybody to take a look at it, and maybe we could vote on that resolution like other towns have. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, I would have a different perspective. You know, when I talk to business owners, and I appreciate Michelle coming here, I don't see, oh, there you go. You know, when I talk to business owners, small business owners, you know, corporations that create the jobs, that create the economic conditions for us to be successful, they're overtaxed. And I think we need to move towards an environment of less tax, less, you know, less restrictions on allowing businesses to thrive. And one of the reasons we have such a high vacancy rate is because there's been policies that have pushed businesses away from this state. And I would not be in support of any policy that's going to be another tax. I would not support that.
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Gaynor, I apologize. Hold on, hold on, we cannot...
Yeah, whether it's large or small businesses, it's all the same at the end of the day. And I think Persipony needs to send the message out to the business community that we are open, and we want to welcome every single business that can come here. And that would send the opposite message.
Well, let's think, we can talk about that and think about it. I think it's important, especially when these big businesses are coming in and putting warehouses in all over New Jersey, which is adding significantly to our stormwater issues, and they're just going to get worse. You know, what we see now is getting worse every year. And somebody has to pay for that. And if you want to come in and put a big business in, and big warehouse, and I don't even know what the smallest business, I don't know what the small businesses are paying that toward this corporate CBT tax, whatever. I don't know, Michelle could let us know that. It might just be the really big businesses, but this has been ongoing for a while, and I would like us to consider it. I understand what you're saying.
So, sir, I noticed you had...
I think Ms. Hernandez is right. I think we need to consider it, and I think it's something we need to look at. I think the environment is something we should all be concerned about, and any funding that we can put toward that, whether it comes from a corporate business tax or any other type of funding source, would be very beneficial. So I think it's something we need to explore about getting funding toward that.
Anyone else, or no?
I would agree with Councilman Musella, and I can tell you why with regards to this. I meet with a lot of the corporations here in town. I meet with a lot of developers in town that want to do business in town, but if you're going to strap them all with a 6% tax, you're going to, they're not going to come. And they're going to leave, and we're going to continue to tax, tax, tax. You know, I understand that, but in order to keep them steady, you're trying to reduce their taxes. That's, you know, that's one of the reasons why pilot programs are popular right now, because of the reduction that they get, and then we still get a benefit. I don't know how we can, in this environment, oppose a 6% tax on corporations here in Persipony. We're trying to get them to stay here. And at the moment, right now, I can tell you, we have two or three that I'm not thinking of leaving Persipony, and I'm trying to keep them here. And I know the council probably feels the same way. I understand the environment part. Maybe there's some other way we can tackle that avenue, but with regards to, you know, imposing a tax on the corporations, I'd actually employ people, put them to work, support the community in that manner. I know a lot of people like to go after the corporations, but I think the higher taxes, you chase them out.
Anyone else? Okay. Come on up, Nick. Sir, if you'd like, I noticed you had your hand up. You can always come up to the mic if you'd like. Sorry, Nick.
Ms. Hernandez, I think I have two answers to your question.
Just need you, just to speak, yeah, if you could just...
Ms. Hernandez, I think I have...
You can state your name.
Tony Fasano. Most people here know me. Five governors have flown over between the state of Northern...
Mr. Fasano, I'm sorry, they can't hear you in the back, you can speak to...
You can take it out of there.
Yeah, there you go.
My knowledge, and a lot of other people's knowledge, five governors have flown over the state of New Jersey to prevent a flooding problem. The Army Corps of Engineers was brought in several times. People do not want their docks lowered or anything else. The Passaic has to be lowered nine feet, and your other tributaries, two, like the Rockaway River, have to be lowered three feet. This will help stop, I'd say, I estimate, 60% of your flooding throughout your towns. The other question I have is that people know they're buying the flood zone. Somebody's got to accept it. The other issue with transportation, I've been fighting with Miki Sherrill, because we're putting in light rail. I don't know whether people know about the difference between light rail and heavy rail. Both sets of trains, passenger trains and freight trains, can run on heavy rail. Heavy rail for trailers and tractors cannot be run on light rail. In Northern Pacific, if you go from Carney Rail Yard, probably takes about 300 trailers at a time. So if you want to reduce it, and you want to bring back business into the area, get your heavy rail done, because most of our factories have sidecar railings. And if the rails were more conducive to them, they can have railheads coming into their warehouses, reducing your trucking. Thank you.
I don't know a lot about Congresswoman Miki Sherrill. You're talking about the gateway. The, yeah, I listened to a lot of that for transportation.
No.
Passenger transportation as well.
Passenger transportation, no.
Can't have any back and forth.
Thank you. All right, you're right.
No, you can, you can talk.
Oh, I could, oh. No, I, I still learned a little bit more about that. And as far as the, all I know about the Passaic with the Army Corps of Engineers, I'm not sure you're talking about five governors, like, in the past coming over? It's always been an issue? See, our district is, the Rivering District has a serious flooding issue. The Army Corps is looking at us now. And I am sure that what you're saying, because I know you know this stuff with the Passaic and Rockaway, is correct. However, we have to be careful when we talk about dredging also, because it just makes it worse downstream. But the Passaic is like a big wall, I know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fasano, I apologize. We cannot have a back and forth. That is your comment, and we're done at this point. So, no, no, it's no problem. So can we have anyone else? Nick, I know you wanted to come up.
Nick Omeack, Lake Hiawatha. No economy can exist in vacuum, and anyone who's making profits, and there's not more people who should be paying more taxes than are not, than the corporate entity. So a mere 6%, take a look and see it actually what it is. But the reason you have all this flooding and everything is because it's overdeveloped. The water can't go in the ground. You can't exist in a vacuum. You have to look at the land and then the plan. The plan has to correspond to the land. We have too much of the opposite. I call it economy in a vacuum. Now, in the past, we had a class, and we had it in mountain lakes. It was to educate everybody. The Environmental Committee from Persipony was one of the sponsors. This is going back during Mayor Barberio's last administration. Not one councilman from this entity here showed up to be educated, and it was called the, what was the name of it, utility?
Stormwater utility?
Yeah, they called it the rainwater, the tax on rain, but it was stormwater utility, excuse me. And it's not a tax on rain, and it's not a tax on your little driveway, it's a tax on corporate impervious surface, large parking lots, which Persipony is full of. All that stormwater degrades our groundwater, which we're eventually going to drink. But the tax, the loophole in that tax, it goes back to the developers or the contractors to put green infrastructure where it's needed to try to mitigate some of the stormwater. So it was a positive thing. But right away, they called it, you're going to tax, you're going to drive us out of here, we're all going to go to Siberia someplace, bring our businesses, you know, some other place, but it was a positive thing. No one wanted to educate themselves about it. So, I mean, you know, in the future, if this state keeps on developing, you know, you can't continue to grow. You can develop, but if you have continual growth, that's like a cancer. And in the future, our children, you're not going to have very much to look forward to. They're not going to be outside that much. They're going to be on some lawn or turf, or they're going to stay home on the video, and they're going to watch wildlife in Africa or something. We're not going to have, our state is going to be, you know, wiped out ecologically and environmentally. So there is a movement right now to save, we've only saved approximately 1/3 of the land that we can actually save, and the goal should be for all of us to try to save as much environmentally sensitive land as we can. And you know why? Because that's where your water comes from. You're drinking the water. Nature purifies the water. So it's not just corporate profits. If their impacts on the environment cost us all in the end. So a minor tax to, you know, to a wealthy corporation, I think you should rethink your, you know, reconsider the whole thing, take a closer look at it. I have a paper I'd like to pass out. It's a rebuttal to my questions about the pilot deal, and maybe at the next session, I'll bring that up. But please reconsider Michelle's petition to you for that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I'll go ahead and, just want to pad that down. Come on up, Bernie.
Bernie Clarkin. Today, I'm here to talk about something which I think should be a simple thing. A year ago, Persipony was awarded a $600,000 grant to complete the pathway or trail around the Persipony reservoir. From what I understand, there's already an unofficial path there, but this is something that would make it much more accessible, safer, and everything else you could ask for. Every other major reservoir in North Jersey has a hiking trail around it, because I've hiked them all, and I happen to like hiking, but this is great for Persipony. At the time, Mayor, you were quoted as saying this is a great idea, and you were for the grant and for developing the trail. So a year has gone by, and I'm just here, number one, to ask you what progress, if any, has been made on developing the trail. And if the answer is none, then my follow-up question is, well, what's going on? When can we get it done? And by the way, I did call up Morris County Park Commission just out of curiosity, and they claim to have nothing to do with this. So I'd appreciate your feedback on that.
Okay, well, first, they do have a lot to do with it, but that's beside the point with regards to that. We had a hearing with them last year sometime, complimentary with regards to moving forward. Yes, I am in favor of it, but it's not the township that's doing it. We're not, we're not the ones that are going to be making the trails. It's going to be the county, is I think, if I'm correct, and most of the responsibility is going to fall on the county. I'll follow up with them. I spoke with Finn Wentworth, who's really spearheaded this along with, I don't know if you know who Mr. Frankel is, but he's another one, and we have a lot of those that contributed to this. So yes, we want to move forward with it, but there is, you know, we're not the ones that are building the path. So what I'll do is, like I said, I will contact the county myself, and I'll speak to, I think it's Mr. Helmer. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Perdi Puchanani, and I reside in the Greater Glenmont Community. The purpose of our visit again is to understand the status of the roads being taken over by the township. So we are nearly six months out since we, the Glenmont Town Home Association, provided the amended HOA bylaws to the township. The passing of the bylaws only covered the roads around the townhomes and not the roads associated with the single-family homes. For the township attorney to suggest otherwise is beyond my comprehension. Any layperson with or without a law degree would know and understand the basic governance principle. Single-family homeowners do not contribute to the HOA. Their consent and approval was not sought when the HOA amended its bylaws. In our meeting with the council in October, we were reminded that it only took the community about two years to get back the amended bylaws to the township. However, you've got to realize we are about 265 townhomes owners, so to try to get everybody on the same page took some time. Here we have two parties, the township and the builder, and six months later, we've not even had a conversation, which is surprising. I would also like to remind the town that there was an engineering punch list, which was done in the year 2010, which identified that the roads built around the community were not according to township standards. Why we are here is because 14, you know, because no work was done when it needed to be done. So, and then finally, in the meeting that we had on February 6th, the town council asked a rhetorical question, how is it fair for the town to fix our roads where they do not even belong to the town? So let me ask this question. How is it fair for the town to collect taxes from us if it doesn't intend to maintain the roads that belong to the townhomes or around the single-family homes? If the town doesn't intend to take over the roads, then perhaps the town should look to make the community whole in fixing the roads to the town standards, and then give us a tax rebate on the property taxes that we pay on a yearly basis. We, as a community, will then take over the responsibility of the roads covering the community. Based upon the township's own cost estimate done a few years ago, the cost of repairs would be in the neighborhood of about $2.4 million. Having the issue delayed makes the cost increase on a daily basis. The township is effectively having an unfunded liability, and the costs keep on increasing. To the mayor and the council, myself, and there are a lot of us around here, just want to know what the status of the project is. I know Paul mentioned something to the effect that you were planning on coming over, but a lot of times, action goes further than words. Thank you for your time.
You want to respond to that?
Yes, please.
So I won't respond to the insults about anybody could read, because quite frankly, I poured over mountains of documents that have come from the township, and I've looked at the homeowners association's own documents. So I think there's a fundamental thing that people are missing, and that is the fact that to accept roadways, there has to be an affirmative act on behalf of the township. So by ordinance, there is no ordinance that accepted these roads. There was three roads in the development, three short ones over to the right, and I can't remember the name of them, but they're in my memo that I sent to the council, which, if the council's okay with it, and the mayor's okay with it, we can share with the residents of Glenmont. But the HOA's own documents say that the roads, sidewalks, driveways, everything is their responsibility, that they own them. Later on in those same documents, and these are filed at the county, so any one of you can go get them and see a copy of it. As a matter of fact, I'll read you the quote. Article 11, titled Restriction, Section 12, states its unequivocally that "all roadways within the development shall remain private and shall not be dedicated to the township of Persipony, Troy Hills." So, for the 20 years or so that those roads haven't been maintained, they were the responsibility of the homeowners association. Now, why the homeowners association, one other thing, take a step back. Those same documents that are filed have a map attached to them, which is a survey of the entire Glenmont development, and says, these are the roads and the common areas. So, just looking at the document, you know, I can read, it shows that all of the roads in there. I would also note that you can't get to the single-family homes without crossing the homeowners association roads. So there is nothing in the record to suggest anything other than either the homeowners responsible, homeowners association is responsible for those roads, or the developer may be responsible for those roads. But as of right now, the town has not accepted them. Now, we can all agree that those roads are in terrible shape. And the mayor and the council president met with a couple of the residents, and I guess some of them are here, back in October, and we said, look, here's the plan. We're going to sit down with the developer and see if they'll contribute some. I've been in contact with the homeowners association's attorney. I've been in contact with the homeowners association's attorney probably at least five times, talking about the progress or lack thereof. And I think, as I said at the last meeting, we asked for a meeting with the developer in November, December, January, and then we were supposed to have a meeting February 13th, which was the day of the snowstorm, and the developer canceled the meeting. So we're waiting for new dates, but the mayor and council are trying to do everything they can to come to a solution. I know it's not quick enough for the residents there. I know the roads are in bad shape. As a matter of fact, I received an email today that said, understand, you had a great meeting on the 13th and that you got all the documents you need to show that the town accepted the roads. And I said, well, that's funny because there was never a meeting because the developer canceled it. So I'm not here to argue with the residents of Glenmont. I know you're dealing with a difficult situation up there, but we're trying to do the best we can. But those roads have been not maintained for 20 years or so and they're in terrible shape. And the fact of the matter is, we had an estimate from our engineer that was done, I think, two years ago, and the number was $3.1 million to bring those roads up to town standards so that the town could then take those over. And again, you know, I understand how these owners of the single-family homes feel, but that's the situation. So I'd love to tell you what you want to hear, but that's the situation that we have.
You can, I'm sorry, there's no speaking from the public. If you'd like, you're more than welcome to come up to the mic.
Vijay Pancharmya. I've been here before and I'm also the homeowner in single-family homes. When we came here four months back, the road condition was bad. Right now, it's worst. Every pothole on that section of Seasons Glen that's touching Summer Hill, it's three times as wide, three times as deep. It's, it's really nightmare driving through that section. My kids are driving on it. People are trying to avoid those potholes and an incident is just waiting to happen because everybody wants to go through the small section of the road where there are no potholes and two sides traffic cannot go through it, right? So four months, I understand you are trying to set up a meeting with the builder. For town to not have a meeting with the builder who is doing most of the business in the town for four months, you really want us to buy that argument? And if we have waited four months, I don't know how long more, we're going to hear the same repeat answer. We are trying to set up a meeting with the builder. Builder is not available. We have reached out to their attorney. Doesn't town have any power to make that happen? I'm sure all of you probably has a builder's contact as well and you talk to builder all the time. We have residents coming here, you know, every 14 days, whenever you have these meetings. Come and drive through those roads, right? I'm paying full property tax and to get this kind of answer that, okay, this will get resolved at some point in time. No, every day, every snowstorm, that section of the road is becoming worse. Come and see what happened with the last snowstorm. Drive through it tomorrow and then we can come and talk in two weeks here, right? To not have any action and make us suffer like this when I'm paying the full property tax, it's unacceptable. You guys are working for us, right? I need better answers. I cannot keep coming here every 14 days to just hear the same BS. That's what I'm hearing.
Are you going to your homeowners association meetings? Are you talking to them about this?
I'm not a homeowners association member.
They're roving.
I'm a single-family homeowner. I have nothing to do with homeowners association. Why should I go there?
Okay, so at this point, I just don't want...
Apparently, they own the roads.
I don't care who they are. Why should I care? I have nothing to do with...
Excuse me, excuse me. We don't want to back and forth everyone. I'm going to ask everyone from the dais to please, at this point, let the gentleman speak and give him his five minutes and once he's done, we'll ask him to take a seat if you guys want to respond.
I'm a single-family homeowner, all right? I do not pay any HOA dues on my single-family home. Why do you think I should deal with them?
Because they own the roads.
I don't care they own the road. I'm paying the taxes. I'm paying taxes to the town. You guys are not giving me any discount, right? I'm paying full property taxes. Almost $17,000 every year. What am I getting?
Police, fire.
Not enough, not enough. Give me $5,000 discount on my property tax. I'll take care of my roads. All right, I request, because this is really frustrating. There are people here coming every two weeks and you have to see the amount of uproar that is happening within our community. All right, it's not helping anybody. Definitely not going to help you. It's not helping us. So please, I request, I beg, please do something about it because this is unbearable situation. I don't want my daughter to get into an accident because of that stupid road. Nobody fixed it. At least you can do the patchwork. Look from the safety angle. Forget about the ownership of the road. Come and fix it so that at least we can drive through it. It's a safety concern. People are walking over it and people are trying to avoid. Somebody's going to hit a pedestrian any, any day.
Tomorrow, just so you know, we're sending up a crew to go through all that whole area with regards to the potholes and we're going to repair them. I spoke to the DPW director today with regards to that. I've received a few emails.
Mayor, before you finish, Vijay, are you finished, sir?
I'm finished.
Okay, if you could just take a seat. But go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, so we're going to be sending up a crew up there to look at the areas, start with the worst areas and patch them up with regards to which roads are the worst and we're going to do it in a cycle. So I just want to let you know that was, that was handled this morning. Listen, I feel your frustration and I go up there, I see the roads, I drive through them, they're horrible. There's no doubt about it. They're, they're in such bad shape, it's, it's, and you know, I know we're going back to see who's responsible, who's not responsible. The fact of the matter is, and you know, and I've been doing this since 2010 and I've, it wasn't as bad as it is now, but there's some culpability, in my opinion, and it's only making an opinion and assumption that the previous owner, which would be the developer, has some responsibility here. We have been trying to get the meeting with them and they have been not so receptive. And you can figure out why. But I told the township attorney today, I want a meeting as best as possible. The roads are bad, guys. I can't, I can't even say, I can't not feel for you because they're bad. And something has to be done and we have to figure this out and we're trying. We're trying our best. And although we don't own the roads, if there's a pathway that we can help out, we want to do that. It's going to take a little bit more time, a little more patience on both parts, your part and our part as well. Because I, I've been up there. I drove up there last weekend, they're horrible. There's no other way to put it. They're such bad shape, it's, it's really disheartening for me. So tomorrow morning, the crew's going to go up, they're going to look around and they're going to decide and, you know, they're going to meet with the BA and myself and start patching up and repairing. So I, and I know you've been going through this for who knows how long. I mean, and I know it's got to be painstaking. I know it's frustrating, but we have a, you know, we have rules and regulations that we have to follow when it comes to property that we don't own. But we are, you know, we plow it, you know, we need to get emergency vehicles out there as well. So I would tell you this, we're on it. And although the wheels seem to go slow and sometimes it does, I can tell you right now that the attorney has been trying to get a meeting with them. And we're going to have that meeting very shortly. If they don't want to have them with us, then we're going to take other avenues as well. So I share your frustration.
You're right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just so you know, too, I drove up, I drove up there the other day, too, and they're even worse than when we went up there and we met. Right. I, I saw it. They're, they're worse than they were a few months ago. And that's, you know, that's why the mayor's going to send a crew up there to at least start making those, you know, filling those potholes and trying to do the best that we can while this is still going on. And, and like he said, I mean, we saw, we saw how bad they are. I know Matt, Mr. McGrath was up there with me, too. You know, we, we saw it. So we're going to try, hopefully we can patch those up while this is still going on. But like the attorney, our town attorney said, we've been trying to get that meeting set up since back then, right after we had that meeting. So. Well, we can't have...
Vijay, I'm sorry, Mayor.
If you want to tell one of these gentlemen to say it or...
Yeah.
I agree with you that the patchwork is what we need immediately.
Well, we're going to get that done.
Thank you.
You can, you can submit those to me. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and all council members and township attorney. My name is Bala Samaga. I'm again part of the Glenmont community and we are keeping this going. And I would like to clear...
Sir, can you just talk a little? There's a gentleman in the back, so he can't hear you.
I would like to clear off one of the misconceptions what township attorney has. We, single-family owners, okay? Any, any contract, any agreement, it should be signed between two parties, okay? So if single-family homeowners, they have to sign some agreement with the developer, then that becomes a contract. Single-family 150 houses, we have not signed any agreement, any contract, any statement. We don't even pay a HOA. If a person pays a HOA, then you may say like, well, paying the HOA, there may be some clauses. We are not paying anything. When we bought the house, there is no involvement of the HOA. So please clear off that misconception that HOA owns the road of the single-family homes.
You don't, you don't have to be a member of the association for them to own those roads. The only legal documents that are filed, and if you guys have something different, I'd be happy to read it. The filed documents say the homeowners association owns the roads. I understand the roads go through where the townhomes are and then extend out, but they have a map attached to their filing that shows a survey that shows every neighborhood in that development. So I agree with you. You don't have to be a member of the HOA for them to own your roads, but until somebody shows us something different, the town hasn't accepted them and it's either the HOA owns those roads or the developer owns the roads. But I know the town doesn't own the roads.
But can they just put anything on the paper and they can say that it's their road?
Yeah, okay, I'll let you finish.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the first thing. And second thing, as our team members requested, yes, if the township has no control on the roads, like anchor program, anchor rebate program, how the New Jersey State Law does it, I mean, we pay almost $5 million property tax. Give us a 50% rebate for the next two years, we will take care of the road, we will make sure the roads are up to the New Jersey or Parsippany township standards and then we will hand over to the township and then you can clear off. That is the second alternative. What we think, we can make it work. And third option, what as earlier team members said, please make an emergency repair for all the roads. It will help all of our neighborhood and it could be a good help. And we are all tax-paying citizens. We are doing our best and I would appreciate everyone's help on that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for going out of the way and helping us out. I'm from Glenmont as well. I'll keep it short. I just have a couple of questions for the township attorney. You read out that clause where it seems it says very clearly that HOA owns the driveways and the streets, all of that. Just a couple of questions. Why was the township engineer issuing punch lists in 2010? Why was the road, why were the roads being inspected in that case?
Because the roads have...
Why in 2015, when the HOA was putting up common area lighting, were we asked to furnish a bond if it was our own road?
Are you done with your questions?
Yeah. So when those developments get approved, there's still a standard that the road has to be built to, whether the township's going to take it, whether the homeowners association's going to keep it. It doesn't matter. It's got to be built to the, to the standard. So a punch list item doesn't mean anything as far as who owns it. All it means is, when this was approved, it's supposed to be built to town standards. There are standards by ordinance. There's also the residential site improvement standards that roads have to be built to. So anytime a development is constructed in town, they want to make sure they're built to those standards. So that's the answer. So the punch list, and again, if you, if any of you folks have information to the contrary, I'd be happy to read it. I'm just telling you what's in the public record.
So I, I do want to say, I know you guys are eager to speak. In the event, unfortunately, it's only a one-time, right, every meeting? If you'd like to, you know, ask follow-up questions, you're more than welcome to stay after the meeting. I'm sure they'll be available and you can ask those questions. I do apologize for limiting you guys, but that's just the procedure. I'm sorry, you'll have to ask it after the meeting.
No, 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 I'll answer that because the same, for the same reason. The lights, you probably had a lighting plan that showed you were putting these lights up. The town wants to make sure that they're put up to the standard and that the lights that are supposed to go up are put up. So that doesn't, again, there has to be an affirmative acceptance by the township, by ordinance of roadways. So it doesn't exist. Like, like I said, if anybody has anything to the contrary, I'd be happy to look at it, but they don't exist. So...
Thank you, Mr. Levery.
Hello, this is Vamsi Pundla. I live in 71 Summer Hill Drive, Motors Plains, part of Glenmont community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you council members who drove through the roads and share our, share the empathy about what we are going through in everyday basis. While the patchwork is done, that is absolutely and exactly that. It's just a patchwork, right? We definitely need a permanent solution for this. And here are my thoughts on this. The, if you look at the sequence, I believe that we do everything according to planning board approval. As per the planning board approved plans, those roads are all public roads, supposed to be dedicated to the town post the construction complete. Now, that did not happen and the developer has posted the bond with the town to meet the performance obligations of that construction. And unfortunately, those bonds were allowed to be expired. I believe that is town's fault. I'm not saying the current administration or current members are part of that, but it did happen. Somebody allowed the performance bonds to be expired. And had those bonds been posted and they've been maintained without allowing those bonds to expire and become bankrupt, the company to become bankrupt, town would have perhaps got the funds. If the builder or developer is not ready to complete the work, to fix it and take over the roads. That's number one key point. And the second key point is, I believe that town has eminent domain for the safety of the residents to enforce a developer to complete the project, even if the current business entity that is, that already completed the construction, sold off the homes and might be not having any funds to go and fix it as Core is running that entity right now. So I believe that town has extraordinary powers in the, in this case, to do something in the interest of the community. And finally, Mr. Levery, you were asking about the documents. All those documents that were provided by the Oprah has this information that this is, according to the planning documents, it is approved. It has been, those roads have been designated as public roads. And last point, which my colleagues tried to spell and I don't think they could do it the way I was about to tell. Yes, the HOA documents, the, they were originally, they also called those roads as the HOA-owned roads, but there were no listing of the roads specifically given. And as per the, that definitely caused the ambiguity. Yes, they put the file, they put the map, everything, but they didn't list every road in the entire Glenmont Part 1, Part 2, and Part 3. And last but not the least, all the, even the HOA community got registered, all those homes are, they are planned urban development, which means they are a simple community, just like other constructions that we see here. They are not condos where all these roads are owned by the association. The roofs are not owned by the association. The front and back yards of the homes are not owned by the association. Association owned only certain common areas, including a road that leads into a swimming pool. And that is what we believe was the intent of filing that with that ambiguity. However, when the town, the previous administration under a previous mayor, before his tenure was ending, he sent a note to the association to fix the documents, the governing documents, and the association, according to that advice, went ahead and fixed those. And now, if you, somebody goes and looks at the council, sorry, county records, you will find that the HOA is not owning the roads as of today. So there was an ambiguity for a period of time, which got remediated by the HOA. Now, I think we need to come together between the administration and between the development, developer entity, whatever the entity that, whatever funds they have, we need to work with them and then we need to find a solution for this. This is my, my position on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone want to respond or?
Go ahead. So first of all, that gentleman is correct. There were performance bonds that were posted. I think it was Frontier Insurance Company that went bankrupt. So, and there is no, believe it or not, there's no fund at the state that covers that if a bond company goes bankrupt, which I was surprised at. But this is a copy of the map that's, that's on file with the county and that shows every... But this is a copy of the map that's on file with the county, and that shows every road in Glenmont and the entire development. So if that was an error, just so you know, that's the map that's on file. Also, just because they amended, the only thing the homeowners association did was amend their covenants and declarations to say that they could donate the roads to the town. Doesn't mean they don't own them, they still own them. So all they did was, I guess two years ago, somebody discovered that, hey, we've got this prohibition that we can't turn these over to the town if we wanted to. So that's what they amended. They just amended it so they have the ability to dedicate them to the town. It doesn't mean that they don't have responsibility for them, and it certainly doesn't mean that the town accepted them. And again, I'm not being argumentative, I just want to, you know, you said some stuff that I agree with. I know when we met, you know, you provided copies of the planning board resolutions, and there were resolutions that said, you know, the roads were to be donated to the town, but that's not what the filed documents say. So, and again, listen, I wish I had documentation that said the town owned them, and then it would make everybody happy. Well, wouldn't make the council, you know, the taxpayers happy, but you understand what I'm saying. I got to go by what's on file and what we have, and we had a meeting, we discussed it. If somebody has any other information, I'd be happy to review it and then advise the mayor and council, so.
Thank you, Mr. Levery. Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, I'm really getting sick and tired of hearing the same thing. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. My name is Joydeep, and I live in Glenmont area in the single-family home, nothing to do with any HOA, whatever technical issue is there. And I'm really getting tired of hearing the same thing. Okay, maybe there are some good things that I heard, but just the words does not really help us. So before you go out today, can you get some concrete plan? Like, one, number one, that is really troubling is a meeting between the township and the developer is not happening for, now it is like last, in last November, we had a meeting with the mayor, and he said he is going to pursue this. Now it is four months, right? So the question is, can you give us a date now, a concrete date by which it has to happen? And if it doesn't happen, then what? Please tell us what will happen if the developer does not come? You set a date, and developer doesn't come, so then what? And can they just go away without doing anything? If there is a 2.4 million or whatever amount that is needed, and somebody did not do it, isn't it stealing? Isn't there any law? Can you not grab them and let them do this work? Please give us a concrete thing, like when this can happen? By which date you set a deadline that within this date, if the developer does not meet us, we have to do something? And what is that thing? Please let us know today. And also for the patchwork, if you can, please give us a date, because without the date, I mean, it's just happening the same thing. We come every two weeks, and we hear the same thing. So I think this cannot go forever, so please give us some dates.
I can respond to that. First of all...
You can just leave that on the table, sir, it's okay.
Oh, just one more thing. I see a lot of back and forth with attorney and some of our friends. Can you have one place where you just talk without like, because the rule here is somebody comes here and cannot say anything else after they are done once. So can you have a face-to-face meeting and resolve this, maybe within this week?
Thank you, sir.
All right, so obviously, we only control one half of the equation, which is the township side of the equation, right? So if the developer doesn't respond or doesn't meet with us, I'm not going to go into, because this is a public meeting, all the things that could happen after that, but I will certainly have a recommendation to make to the mayor and council if the developer doesn't meet. We did have a meeting scheduled for the 13th. Obviously, we had a snowstorm that day, so even though they canceled it, you know, I can't say that that was unreasonable. But I can't give you a date, but I can tell you that if the developer refuses to meet with us, and by the way, I just want to point out that the township is the only party doing anything in all this. Like, I talked to the homeowners association's attorney, they're the ones that legally seem to own the roads, so you think that other people would be, and certainly the single-family homeowners, you have every right to file something against the developer as well. The town is trying to do what it can, but I can't get the developer in a headlock and force them to show up for a meeting. If they don't meet with us, then I will make recommendations to the mayor and council, and then they'll ultimately make a decision, but I don't want to air out what the possibilities are. Understood, but that's between me and the client, and I don't want to air that out in public so that the developer, we telegraph what we may or may not do. So, and I'm sure you can understand that.
Anyone else from the public would like to come up and speak, are more than welcome to? Going once, going twice.
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mucella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath.
Yes.
Mrs. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial by the township council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Make a motion.
Second? Second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Hernandez. Okay, roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the approval of minutes, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes above?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving along to presentations and reports. Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, council president, just so, tomorrow night at the library, the citizens was having a meeting, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is the mere fact that, and I checked with the attorney, we can't have more than two council members there. So you would have to select who you would want to go, because it would be a quorum, because it's in a public building as well. So that would strictly up to you, who you would like to go to the meeting on that. On February 8th, I just want to know, I made police promotions that were actually way, way overdue. We didn't make promotions of the guards, because our police force was pretty much depleted, but now we're starting to beef it back up. So it was a really good day. So Captain Brian Dowd was promoted to deputy chief, Sergeant Brian Conover and Sergeant Jezekki, and Sergeant Luke Costigan and Sergeant George Zepedes were all promoted to lieutenant, and Detective Jess, I can never say the guy's name, Pembina, and Officer Jason Ferrell were promoted to sergeant. This is, we are in the process of building our police department back up. We're still, right now, at 95. We should try to get to 103, 106 in that area there. That will, that'll pretty much solidify where we need to be, even though our ordinance says 113 police officers, we've been able to man very successfully at 106 when I was mayor previously. And one of the reasons why we need to do this is because we're getting too far behind. If we don't start replenishing our police force, we're never going to catch up, ever. So with that being said, I want to congratulate those individuals as well. Also, I got to tell you, on February 9th was a really touching day. On, we attended the Night to Shine, and the Night to Shine is a prom at Liquid Church. It's a night to shine, sponsored by the Tim Tebow Foundation, and it's a complimentary event for the people with special needs. It's really, really touching. If you want to go on my Instagram page, my Facebook page, you can scroll down and see what took place at that time. It's really, really heartwarming, and I thank Liquid Church and the Tim Tebow Foundation for including Parsippany, its volunteers, it's our police force, and all EMS in participating. With that, the budget, so Councilman Karifi, I'm going to, you got to send me dates, because I'm here all day, and so is Jamie, and I would like to meet as soon as we can. I would love to get this budget approved by April, if we could. So, and you decide, when do you want to have the meetings with the residents? It could be any night you want, or it could be on a weekend. That's strictly up to you. So you and Council Vice President, contact our office and see what type of dates are good to meet with the finance committee. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Town Council? Anyone from Township Council?
Oh, do you like all committee reports?
You, we can go to committee reports, absolutely, Ms. Hernandez.
All right, I met with the environmental committee again on, what, last week, and they're moving forward with their tree ordinance, and they have an event that's, I'm sorry, you can't hear me back there, right? Is this better? Okay, yeah, so I met last week with the environmental committee. We're having an event, like a green public education thing that we, they asked if the town would want to be involved. The Parsippany Environmental Chair also asked if you wanted them to be involved with any flooding issues that we might be exploring with the recent storms in our town, and a lot of people that are suffering for that. And I think that's about it. I also met last week with the traffic committee, and we just got to know each other, and I look forward to meeting with them again. That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Anyone else from the council? Okay, yes?
Yeah, so go committee, going to read for the Economic Development Committee. So the economic development team and Mayor James Barberia will extend their congratulations and officially inaugurate the new business, Morris Golf Shop, located at 96 North Beverwick Road. Join us for the celebration on Thursday, February 22nd at 11 o'clock AM, and please feel free to welcome to attend. It's open to the public. The next meeting of the Economic Development Committee is on Thursday, March 21st at 6:30 PM at 90 East Halsey Road, third floor conference room. Please note, this is a change of date. The public is invited. Please RSVP with Chairman Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. And again, this is probably one of the most important things that Frank brought to my attention earlier this week. The Economic Development Committee collaborates with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority to offer several grants tailored for local companies. These grants aim to assist businesses in offsetting lease expenses for new or extra space ranging from 250 to 10,000 square feet at street level. And furthermore, there's a provision of $5,000 to $50,000 to reimburse business proprietors for expenses linked to interior or exterior enhancements in the acquisition and installation of new furniture, fixtures, and equipment. As you know, we're doing a lot on North Beverwick, incredible opportunity. Highly recommend you reach out to Frank Cahill. Again, phone number's 973-559-6000. That's it.
It's itchy.
Okay, Township Attorney?
Uh, no report this evening.
Miss Administrator?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Just real quickly, wanted to mention, also pass along my congratulations to the police officers who were promoted. All seven of them are great men who work hard for you to keep you safe. Our police force is the best in the state. They care about what they're doing, and they're doing their absolute best. Showing their good work through a promotion is something that is very justified and something that's, you know, should be congratulated. There's a number of openings that the township has, and they're listed on the website. One of them in particular is for an administrative assistant in my office, Susan Paz, who has served the township very well over the last five years, in the mayor's office with Mayor Soriano, in the police chief's office, and now in the business administrator's office. So three difficult offices where you're handling important items for the residents and sometimes dealing with people who are not very happy. She handles herself with grace and really looked out for the residents, and she will be missed. We thank her for her service. That's all I have.
I don't have a report at this time. Engineering report? Or, I'll go ahead and read that. 2021 road resurfacing curb and sidewalk program, the annual road resurfacing curb and sidewalk projects on hold pending legal negotiations with the contractor, no council action required. Rockaway River flood wall levy inspection, our consultant is working on preparing design details and a cost estimate for the maintenance and repair work to the flood wall and levy. Recent site inspections were made to aid the design of the repairs. Once the design and necessary permitting is complete, the project will be advertised for bid, no council action required. North Beverwick Road Streetscape Project Phase One, the first phase of the North Beverwick Streetscape was awarded. Once contracts are executed, a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled and a construction schedule provided, no council action required. Drumline Drive Stream Cleaning, NJDEP permits have been issued for this project. Our consultant is finishing the design, and we intend to put the bid, we intend to bid the project in the next few ones, no council action required. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project Phase Two, the second phase of Putting Stone Heights Road Improvements Project is in design. We anticipate bidding the project early next year, no council action required. Jefferson Road Improvements, the NJDEP permits and construction plans for the New Jersey, for the Jefferson Road Project are in design. Permit application to plan will be sent to the NJDEP. The project will be bid once NJDEP permits have been issued, no council action required. Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements, the first phase of the Lake Intervell Area Street Improvements Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in March 2024, no council action required. Sylvan Way Culvert Improvements, we're working with our design professionals on the preparation of the plans and the NJDEP permit application. We anticipate bidding this project in 2024, no council action required. Edward Road Improvement Phase Two, second phase of Edward's Road Improvement Project between Route 46 and New Road is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in March 2024, no council action required. North Beverwick Road Streetscape Project Phase Two, the second phase of the North Beverwick Road Streetscape is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in May 2024, no council action required. Emergence Declaration, East Heading Wall Collapse, the request for an emergency purchase to reconstruct the collapsed retaining wall on East Heading Place. Price quotes have been solicited, and reconstruction can begin once wall materials have been secured. A resolution will need to be adopted by the council. Replacing a fence in the public right-of-way, 84 Hamburg Road, Block 240, Lot 10, this office reviewed and has no objection to, this office has, this office reviewed and has no objection to a replacement of a fence in the public right-of-way, a resolution will need to be adopted by council. Roadway Design Projects, the following projects are in design or proposals have been requested. Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Eight, Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Sylvan Way Sidewalk Improvements, River and Stream Desnagging Plans and Permits, Enton Road Traffic Study, no council action required. Moving on to ordinances, first reading. Ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance establishing 2024 salary ranges. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and pass on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township Persippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 290 Parks, Recreation Areas, and Public Lands, Article 1, Motor Vehicles Fees, Section 290-4, No Country Club Utility Fees, and Chapter A, 445, fees compilation, Section A, 445-37, No Country Club Utility of the utility of the code of the Township of Morris, Persippany Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, New Jersey. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and pass on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township Persippany Troy Hills, held on February 20, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 19, 2024, 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved, that the clerks be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, and seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Ordinance 2024-04, Bond Ordinance Providing for Various 2024 Capital Improvements for the Township Persippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, appropriating of $4,200,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $4 million bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and pass on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township Persippany Troy Hills, held on February 20, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 5, 2024, at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved, that the clerks be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia. Seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Utility Fees, and Chapter A 445, Police Compilation, Section A 445-37, No Country Club Utility of the Utility of the Code of the Township of Morris, Persippany Troy Hills, and the County of Morris, New Jersey. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township Persippany Troy Hills held on February 20th, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage, a meeting to be held on March 5th, 2024, at 7 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved, that the clerks be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Can I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Ordinance 202404, Bond Ordinance Providing for Various 2024 Capital Improvements for the Township Persippany Troy Hills and the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, Appropriating $4,200,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4 million bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. Be it resolved, that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township Persippany Troy Hills held on February 20th, 2024, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage, a meeting to be held on March 19th, 2024, at 7 p.m. prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved, that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes at this time. Just give me one second before I move on to the consent agenda. I just need to confirm something here. Okay, so to answer the question, for resolutions number 2024, 25, so 2024, 25, 26, and 27, also 28, and 29, are discussing, are discussing the, the pool of candidates for the five-year period. So we're not actually appointing anyone specifically, it's just, it's just setting up a pool of candidates that we can pick from. What we can do at this time is we can table them until we further discuss with the council and administration, and then we could move on to, to approving the others.
Need a motion to table them?
We'll go ahead and table them.
You got to table them.
So we'll do a motion to table.
24 to 30.
Okay. Motion to table, can I get a motion to table resolutions 24 to, to 30, please?
Motion.
Okay.
To table.
To 30.
Yes, 24 to 30. Motion made by Mr. Neglia. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. So we're going to go ahead and jump to number eight. R 202431, Authorizing the Award of Contract for Professional Services to Michael Lavery, ESQ of the firm Lavery, Savagia, Brahminus, and Cohen, as Township Attorney for 2024. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Neglia.
Seconded by Mr. Mucella.
Seconded by Mr. Mucella. Okay. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. R 202432, Authorizing the Award of Contracts for Professional Services to John Paul Velez and Alfonso De Mayo as public defenders for the 2024 year. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. R 2024-33, Authorizing the Award of Contracts for Professional Services to Monica Madden, ESQ of the Law Firm Madden &amp; Madden, and to Lisa Thompson of the Law Firm Mason Thompson as municipal prosecutors. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution above?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
R 2024-34, Award of Contract to Nissavacia for Professional Services Township Auditor, motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.